I'd like to call the meeting to order on the Amherst Executive Board of Education. We're so excited tonight. Look at this place. This is great. Love it. We're gonna kick off the meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like a recommendation to adopt the agenda as presented, including a... Oh, first, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Snyder.
Yes, I'm here.
Mrs. Gellis.
Yes.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mr. Yakobozzi.
Yes.
Mr. Zappa.
Present.
Hey now, Ron, would you like to make a recommendation?
Yes, make a motion, yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Yakobozzi.
Aye.
Mrs. Gellis.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder.
Aye.
Next, we have a presentation from our state representative, Joe Miller.
So, we'll do this formally, but it's so nice to be among friends back here in Amherst. My alma mater, so I'm always proud and excited to be back in Amherst. So, on behalf of the Ohio State House, as your District 56 representative here for Amherst and the outlying areas, I'd like to present you this commendation. Unfortunately, my office and I were unable to make it to the grand opening, the ribbon cutting for Powers Elementary, but as you know, that is a 21st century state-of-the-art building. Your faith and trust in Principal Schwartz and the staff, and of course, the investment in the students is to be noted. We're very proud to offer this commendation and say thank you for not only opening such a beautiful and 20th century, 21st century state-of-the-art building, but you did it in such a way that you were conscientious of the taxpayers' dollars. You did it by closing schools, saving money, and that shows the dedication by the staff here, by you, the president of the board, and by everybody here that supported this effort. So, on behalf of the State House, I appreciate your efforts, and I want to commend you for all that you've done for Amherst Schools and, of course, the new Powers Building. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll start our good news reports for this evening. Mr. Gibson, for the junior high.
Hi, thank you.
Before he starts, can I go to my car and get my sunglasses?
Welcome, guys, for having me tonight. We have two people or two kind of groups to really celebrate tonight. Unfortunately, one of them couldn't be there, and that is Mr. Chris Perdue. He is a bus driver and one of our monitors during the day, and he has a college class tonight that, you know, we didn't mean to tell him to skip education. They're an educational institution. So, he runs our gamers club after school, and it's something he just started, second semester. He started with 14 students. They meet every other week, one time a week, and he's now up to 52 students. And it's basically an hour after school. They're in the Creative Learning Center. They're hanging out. It's new kids meeting each other. They're playing video games, having fun. And really, it's just a great atmosphere to support each other, to meet new people, and Mr. Perdue has done a great job of really promoting that and kind of building that growth at the junior high. That's something we're really proud of. So, I'd like to recognize Mr. Perdue. And then, the second group we have here is Mrs. Williams, and she has two of her Agents of Change, Agents of Change is an organization in our building, and she'll tell you a little bit about what they do, but they do a variety of different things. Also, again, supporting students, bringing students together. I think one of the favorite things they did for us, at least, was they walked around last week with donuts and coffee in the morning and just going door-to-door first period, offering donuts and coffee to teachers. So, as you can see, I enjoy a donut or two when they're around. So, Mrs. Williams, and she has two of her agents with her.
I do. I have Miss Ariana and Corinne. So, Agents of Change of all students at the junior high. We have actually like 28 kids this year who signed up to be a part of it. And our purpose and goal is really just to make a difference in the building, to make sure everyone feels like they belong, that they're included, that they're part of the building in any shape or form. So, as Mr. Gibson said, we did, what would you call it, like a staff?
Yeah.
Like a staff appreciation first period, and we walked around, and we served, and we made cookies, and gave everybody a donut. But then, two weeks ago, we actually did a kindness week. And through that kindness week, we did various events for all students. Ari, do you want to talk about a couple of things we did during Kindness Week?
We did my favorite shirt day on Wednesday, wearing your favorite shirt and like represent like what you like to wear and...
We did Cookie Day.
We did a soup sale. We passed out cookies in the morning. And then, I first took my phone away.
And we did kindness post-it notes on every single locker, and they were really focused and driven to do handwritten ones, which I'm sure you know took us a lot of time to write, 900 handwritten notes. And then, we also spent a lot of time on doing like love bracelets. So, everybody first period on Friday, a love bracelet that just represents kindness. So, we worked really hard. We meet once a month after school on our own time, and we feel like we make a difference, don't you think? So, thank you for having us.
Before you start, there are tons of people in the back, and there's lots of chairs up in the front. If anybody wants to come up, come on this little bike.
Thank you again for having us today. As you can see, I'm here to report on high school athletics and a good news report. Came in a great time to ask us to come. We've had a tremendous winter. Let me give you a couple by the numbers for the winter. We won four conference championships. We had 33 student athletes earn either first team All-SWC, first team All-Conference, or first team All-Iran County honors. We had two Southwestern Conference Players of the Year. Actually, both of them are here with us tonight, Jacob Kramer in hockey and Michaela Velazquez in bowling. We have a Conference Coach of the Year, and Coach Bartek, if she's here, is the... Coach Bartek's back here. We have six state qualifiers. They're all here tonight as well. We have two student athletes who qualified for a national meet. You'll meet them a little later. And we have one student athlete who has etched his name at the top of the OHSA record books, which we'll talk about here in a bit. So, I'm gonna call the groups forward since there are so many of them. If I could have the girls' bowling team come forward first, please. This group of young ladies here was led by sophomore Michaela Velazquez, who just competed in the state meet this past weekend. They won the North Shore Bowling Conference this winter. They also won the OHSA sectional meet, which qualified them as a team to go on to district. So, congratulations to them on a great season. Looking forward to great things in the future, and congratulations. Thanks for coming, ladies.
I have a question. Didn't Michaela place 46 out of how many kids?
Forty-third, right?
Forty-third out of how many?
Correct, forty-third.
Out of how many kids?
Seventy... Well, 78 competed in all three games.
Very good.
Thank you, ladies. If I could have the hockey team come up next, please. Thanks to the support of the board. This group came back four years ago. They had a three-year hiatus. In the four years we've been back, we've just won our third consecutive Southwestern Conference Championship and third consecutive Baron Cup Championship. The Baron Cup is the league we... It's a hockey-only league. It's a Greater Cleveland High School Hockey League. We're in the Baron Cup II Division. We are the only Southwestern Conference school who has ever won both the SWC and Baron Cup three straight years. So, obviously, a tremendous accomplishment for this group of young men. We also have three students that I'd like to recognize whose names went in the OHSA record books. Joey Kramer had 53 saves this year... I'm sorry, 53 assists this year. He needs 50 to get in the OHSA record books, so congratulations to Joey.
Joey, step forward so we know.
I may have Brady Grove in the defense kind of stuff, where I know it's a technical word, but Brady is obviously our goalie, and the young man that play in front of him. We recorded 11 shutouts this year, so that not only gets us in the record books for a team, but it also gets us in the record... Gets Brady in the record books, seeing he's our only goalie. He was part of all 11 shutouts. This group also helped us only allow 65 goals this season. You need seventy... A minimum of seventy or a maximum of 75 goals allowed to get in the record books, so obviously, congratulations to this group as well. Jacob is now in the record books 12 times. He recorded six of those this season. He is in for this season on single-season records. Goals in the season with 58, assists in the season with 56, and points in the season with 114. With that all being said, Joey is actually the top of the OHSA record books for points in a career with 471 and assists in a career with 259. The cool part about that stat is Amherst is actually 1-2 in both of those stats. Joey passed... Or Jacob passed Connor Morris, who was a player prior to the program taking a three-year hiatus, but it's pretty cool that Amherst is at the top of the record books in both of those stats. Jacob is also second in the OHSA in goals per career with, I believe, it's 212. So, congratulations to Jacob. He's actually gonna finish his high school career for Amherst this coming weekend when he competes in the All-State All-Star Game at Nationwide Arena, where the Columbus Blue Jackets play. So, congratulations to this group, and thanks for coming, guys. If I could have the boys' swimming team come forward, please. Again, like our hockey team, this boys' swimming team continues to dominate the Southwestern Conference every year. We are the only boys' team in Southwestern Conference history to win the championship, the team championship, five straight years, completed that feat this year. So, congratulations to these guys on their fifth straight conference championship. Also, want to make note, this group has five state qualifiers in it, and if Ethan Belak, John Belak, Chase Garushkavicious, Jacob Raykar, and Kevin Hyde can step forward, please. Ethan, raise your hand, Ethan. Ethan competed as a diver at the state meet this year and finished 18th overall, so congratulations to Ethan. And then, these five young men all comprised two different relays at the state meet. The Boys 200 medley relay finished 21st overall. Actually, and that group consisted of the Belak boys, Kevin Hyde, and Chase Garushkavicious, so congratulations to those guys. The ironic... The neat thing is the 200 free relay actually included all five boys. We had a different relay swim on Friday in prelims, and then a different relay swim in the championship on Saturday. So, the Boys 200 relay finished 15th overall, so congratulations to this group of young men. Thank you so much for coming. If I could have Caleb, Stempowski, and Dominic Kudus, please come forward. I promise this is it. But we've had a lot of success, so... These two young men have qualified to run in the indoor national meet this weekend in New York City. Caleb, first gentleman right here, qualified in the high jump. I think it was a 6'5" jump at Mountain Union, correct? So, congratulations to Caleb on qualifying for the national meet this weekend in New York City. And then, Dominic qualified a couple of weeks ago at Spire, I believe, correct? In the 60-meter hurdles. So, best of luck to both these guys, and congratulations, and thanks again for coming. All right, everybody. Thanks. That's it.
Are all the coaches here for the swim?
Uh, let's see. Coach Morris, Coach Glatz. Coach Casper can come up.
Can they all come up?
Coach Bartek's back here, Heidi. If I could have all the coaches come forward, please.
I just think we would be missed not recognizing these coaches and the effort and the time they put in to get the best out of these kids. The coaches that play, as you know, are very instrumental in getting these kids to do what they do. Sometimes, these kids don't understand that they don't have the ability to do certain things. At least, they think they don't. These guys pull it out of them. So, thank you to all of you for what you do, your time and effort, so...
Thank you again for having us. Appreciate it.
And on behalf of the Board of Education, I too just want to say thank you to our parents, our coaches, our athletes. Success like this is that it requires a team effort, and that's what we have here. Parents who are supportive, our coaches, as Mr. Yakobozzi said, who are dedicated and hardworking, and certainly, the same can be said of our athletes who go the extra mile to excel in your chosen areas. And we are just so proud of your effort, your accomplishments, and go comments. Thanks again for being here.
All right, we'll move on with the agenda. Everybody's welcome.
Goes for me, too. I look forward to these moments.
I'm sorry it's taken so long. Thank you, sir. All right, thank you.
Yeah, there's nobody signed up for the...
They should have signed up for last.
Okay, so we'll move on with your report.
Sure.
Excellent. The board, you have a spreadsheet in front of you. You see quite often, month-to-date on the left, year-to-date figures on the right. We're comparing the current fiscal year 2024 to February 19 and February 2018. You'll see relatively easily in the highlighted green areas, those are favorable variances compared to the prior year. For revenues, it means we've received more revenue in this period for year-to-date than we did last year. And then, in the expenditures at the bottom, it's where we spent less than what we spent in prior period last year. I can go through and explain a number of different things to you. Probably what I would most want to point out is line 101, which is real estate revenue. We've received more in February of 2020 than we did in February of 2019. We won't really know how this shakes out. Actually, tomorrow is Settlement Day, so we will be receiving our third installment of the real estate collection, and that is the collection then first half of 2019. So, we have both in the month-to-date February column and the year-to-date February column, we have received more than we did last year as of the end of February. For unrestricted, line 1.035, we received more from a month-to-date standpoint than we did last year, but not in the year-to-date category. And then, all I will point out then is under the rightmost column, fiscal year-to-date February 2020, the bottom revenue number, which is other financing revenue, $632,507. That includes $291,000 of the insurance proceeds. We just received nearly $75,000 in the month of February, which was the last installment. And just to report back, that is complete. We received all of the revenue less than deductible, and we paid out to our construction manager separate and apart from the project. We paid to them the total amount of the repairs for the water damage claim at the new Powers. From an expenditure standpoint, we are running favorably for line 3.02, which is employee benefits and retirements, both from a month-to-date and a year-to-date standpoint. And then, other expenditures, line 4.3, again, both from a month-to-date standpoint and a year-to-date standpoint, we are running favorably. Just ending, comparing cash balances, from February 18, 19, and 20, we are building cash balances, and again, this is probably the high point for the next six months due to February being the first month of collections for advances from the county. You'll see declining balances here now through likely August, and then they build up again. We will see exactly with the settlement tomorrow where we end up with each levy and each fund that receives real estate revenues. That is all for my report this evening, just to say that we are running really close to our expectations for the year, so nothing add to worry about. For the items for the board's approval this evening, items 9A, 9B, and 9C are all typical items. Approval of minutes, approval of February financial reports, and request for approval of increased appropriations for the following funds. The 022 fund is for greater tournament activity that we're experiencing this year, so we're increasing appropriations for that. Fund IV and Fund 10, which are the balance of the other six more appropriation changes, that's all due to project stuff, I'll call it. We are... We have to appropriate, for example, for Fund 010-9310, which is the state share interest fund. And the board approved, I believe, in December, 154,263.98 appropriation to potentially transfer the state share interest. We did not transfer it at that time, and we did not increase appropriation at that time. Now, there is $156,177.54 in the state share interest fund, and we have received the go-ahead from, oh, the Facilities Commission to use that. We have specifically received it in writing. So, this is the first board meeting subsequent to their approval. So, we will approve the appropriation. Later on, you'll approve the transfer, and then, we will execute those transactions and also an LFI MOU with the Facilities Commission so that it gets on the books that we've been approved to do this. The next item, then, Item D, are after the fact. Anything over $3,000 the board is required to approve, both out of the range of my latitude for approval. SORSA, which is Schools of Ohio Risk Sharing Authority, and Code 42, the first two items. I just want to share with you that the SORSA is the $6,485 is for the increased value for our property insurance for the half a year that we're in the new Powers, all right? And that's with taking the old power out of the values and adding on the new Powers valuing. So, that is the additional $6,485 for that. Code 42 is... It is a technology item that we use. It's, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Moore, our cloud storage and the like. But this right here is a situation where everyone's embracing a more electronic environment, and what happened here was when Mr. Cogdell signed through DocuSign, any electronic signature, Code 42 dated the invoice for the date that he executed the contract in DocuSign, which isn't really accurate. It should have... The invoice should have been dated after we were permitted to execute a purchase order, but anyways, according to a higher vice code, the board needs to approve anything over $3,000. And then, best fence... This was fencing at the, I believe, freshman baseball field. Steve?
Yes.
And this was a shared expenditure between athletics and...
The summer rec baseball program is doing work over there with the dugouts and just some general upgrades to the freshman baseball field, and this was our contribution to the project.
So, that is the reason for the $8,000 after the fact. And then, Item E, you'll see $156,177.54 being moved from Fund 109310 to Fund 109300. Fund 109300 is where we spend all of the state share revenue for the co-funded project. And then, $284,870.40 is moving from the LFI, which is our locally funded initiative interest fund, to 0049100, which is where we're spending all of the LFI monies for the project. And then, Item F is acknowledging and approving the superintendent treasurer and board president to execute the specific LFI MOU paperwork that is required for the Facilities Commission. It's just kind of the final step in allowing me to make the transfer and then certify to the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission that we are... We have been approved to and are going to expend the state share interest dollars from the project. Item G, then, our donations.
I can have a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendations, 9A through G.
To move.
Second.
Any discussion or questions for me? All right. So, and maybe this is really for you. So, why is there a jump in the tournaments? Is it just because the cost is more?
A lot of it... A lot of it just depends on how many tournaments we're actually hosting.
Okay.
And some of your... Depending on what kind of record you had during the season, where you're seated, you may get an opportunity to host a tournament game versus, you know, playing at either a neutral site or on the road in another school. So, I think this number is predicated primarily on the number of events that we've actually had an opportunity to host.
Sure. Yeah, we're hoping to do more of that, right?
Right.
It's also gate receipts.
Oh, gotcha.
And if you all... Ohio High School Athletic Association has a pretty nice gig. When we host tournaments, they receive, for the most part, any of the profits from the tournament, and of course, the district is allowed to make up any of their expenditures on that, but the balance, the profits, go back to OHSA. So, that's really what this is. It's allowing Casey's Department to write multi-vendor purchase orders to pay all of our game workers and officials, et cetera, and then also send the balance of the proceeds to OHSA.
I think that's nice for people to know that, though, that, no, we don't keep all that.
No, we don't.
Yeah, a lot of times, these tournament funds are basically, you know, revenue comes in, expenses go out, and go back to the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
Thanks. And it's also a good thing.
Yes.
Because they have a lot of kids that are participating in these.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a good record.
And of course, as the board is aware, we get, you know, in the springtime especially, with the district and regional track tournaments, those are Ohio High School Athletic Association-sponsored events, and it's certainly nice to have the opportunity to be able to host those. Because that's a good thing for our customers and community.
Yes. We have builder's risk insurance on the new building. How are we covered with Powers in the event that something goes wrong while they're doing all the demolition work?
It is no longer our liability.
It now falls on, what's his name, right? We have no liability at all?
No.
Even though we own the building?
The property is still ours.
Well, that's my point. We own the property, so do we have any... We still... I assume our liability coverage still protects us in the event something drastically goes wrong over there while this whole project is moving on, right?
But as of February 1st, our property coverage, the values of the building fell off.
After Modarelli takes over now for that.
Right.
Right.
Okay. That's when we essentially turn the building over from Amherst to Icon, the building. Yeah, but it's still in our property, so we have to have some sort of risk insurance.
It is, yes.
If somebody steps on our property and gets hurt, you're not going to look to Modarelli, you're not going to look to us. Okay.
Okay. Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mr. Engle?
Aye.
Mr. Yarkabozie?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye.
Go on to Superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Snyder. Just the first three items here, just reminders of important dates that are coming up. First of all, we have our Family First, our next Family First night will be on Wednesday, March 18th, which is a week from this Wednesday, so we've got that coming up. Our First Bite Demolition Night will occur at the Old Powers on April 1st at 6:00 PM. And as I understand it, we're on track, and that date should be good to go. We've been promoting the fundraiser through social media, websites, I know it's been shared in different locations, so we're going to continue to promote that here over the next couple of weeks, and so I wanted everyone to be aware of that. Again, that's Wednesday, April 1st at 6:00 PM. And then, the other date I wanted to highlight is Wednesday, April 8th, is our State of Schools, and that will be at 6:30 PM, and we are going to hold that at the New Powers Elementary. Thought that would be a nice, nice thing to do for that program for this year with the Old Powers. So those are just some key dates that are coming up. If your schedules allow, please feel free to attend any or both of those events.
What time is the First Bite?
It's 6 o'clock.
Okay.
6 o'clock, and the State of the Schools is actually 6:30.
Steve, I have a question for you on the, when you do the State of the Schools, was there any possibility if people come that would want to walk the building?
Sure, that's a good idea. We can actually, we probably will, the program itself will probably be about a half hour, and it was time for questions, and I'm sure it would be very easy to tack on some additional time, but folks haven't already had the opportunity to walk the building, we can certainly make that available. Be a very nice, be a very nice thing. Let's see here, a couple other things, just wanted to provide an update on the coronavirus situation. Obviously, this is something that everybody is talking about, that is dominating the media, it's just on basically a daily basis, and I just wanted to let the Board know that we are in constant communication with our Lorain County Health Commissioner, Dave Covell. He has done a great job. He's attended actually the last two county superintendents' meetings. He was at the, always meet the first Friday of each month, he was at the February meeting, he actually came back this past Friday and provided us with an update. He is in touch with the folks in Columbus on a daily basis, and he is, obviously, he's our expert in public health in Lorain County, so we're going to rely on his expertise, his thoughts, and his recommendations as we work our way through this, but that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. We did post an update on the website, actually a link directly to the Lorain County Health Department, so we'll continue to provide those updates as they become available to us through Dave and his staff. And then, the last item I just wanted to share is a little bit about staffing, relates to a couple of items you see here on the Board Agenda. We have actually started our staffing process, we've posted some teaching positions internally. Tomorrow, a lot of our teaching positions will be posted externally. We want to get those out so we can create our pool of applicants, so that process has started, as we start to look towards next year and plan for next year. But I did want to highlight one item in particular. As the Board is aware, we recently adopted and have implemented a new technology plan that provides one-to-one devices, grades 3 through 12. We also have two students per one device, grades K through 2, and one of the things that has become evident as we've worked our way through this process over the last five or six months is we need some tech support to help our, to help our staff incorporate that technology into their, you know, day-in, day-out instruction. As you know, Amanda Sears has done a wonderful job in that role over the past few years, started with a part-time position and grew into a full-time position, and with, with all this technology that we have, that we have need for some additional support there. As you're aware, Beth Schwartz, our Principal Powers, this is one of her areas of expertise. She has the credentials in this area. This is an area that, she just has a passion for this area, helping teachers, you know, work with technology and incorporate that into what they do, day in, a day out, and so when we posted this part-time tech integration position, Beth expressed an interest in the position, and you will see a recommendation tonight on the agenda, actually, two recommendations. One, that she would resign her position as elementary principal effective at the end of the year, so she can then move into this part-time tech integration position as we prepare for next year. And as Beth has indicated to me, you know, she's looking at this change for professional reasons as well as family reasons. She, as I said, is very, very good, very, very good at a lot of things, but this is an area that she's especially passionate about, and she has just shared with me that this would be a nice opportunity for her professionally, and also something that really works for her family. So, I guess it's, on one hand, we're sad to see her leave as Principal Powers Elementary, Powers Elementary School, and as the Board knows, she has done just a fabulous job there with the students, the staff, parents, and community, especially as you look back and look at this transition into the new school, her efforts will certainly be missed in that principalship. But, on the positive side, we are fortunate that she is going to be able to provide some assistance and help and support to our students and staff in a different capacity, so that's a good thing. So again, just wanted to highlight that, you will see those two recommendations on this evening's agenda as part of her personnel section, and that completes my report.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, we'll move on with Mr. Mullen, our report.
All right, so Steve mentioned a few different opportunities for parents and community members to participate with the State of the Schools, and a few other things, parent night coming up. Wanted to highlight one other event that's coming down the pike in April, and that is a Summer Activity Fair.
Yes.
It's going to be held on April 15th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Powers Elementary School, and the goal is to, probably the first one we've ever had, Sarah?
First one we've ever had.
First one we've ever had, but the goal is to provide one location, we're bringing all of the different organizations and different programs for, that are available for kids during the summer months. So what are all the opportunities that our Amherst students have throughout the community in Amherst, that they can participate, that can be engaged, educational, have fun over the summer, and so we currently have about 25 vendors that are coming in, including, for example, Amherst Book Library, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the Metro Parks, Camp Invention, Move Amherst, one of the new initiatives by Kim Haney, all the Amherst athletic groups like softball and football and swim team, T3, St. Stowe Summer Theater. So we're bringing, again, one, a one-stop shop for parents to look at what's available for the summer for my kids, and try to have as much information as we can there, cost and opportunity, times, everything. So, kudos to Sarah. Sarah, I just want to put you on the spot for one second.
Yeah.
Can you just share, like, again, it's the first time we're going to have this.
Right.
It's a great idea. Where, where did it come from? Who was on the team that's kind of working through this? It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work. On the team is our district social worker, Jill Mayorka. We've also got several of the guidance counselors from the district, Jill Coleman from Powers, Joanne Cardabucci from the junior high, and Bob Parkula from the high school. And this came about as we were surveying the community last year for their parent information nights and things that they wanted to find out about. This was one of the big ones, that they, you know, how do I keep my kid engaged in the summertime? And so, we started meeting around mid-year just to kind of talk about what are some of the groups that we want to see, and, you know, we've just kind of been divvying it up. But what's been interesting is, as word is getting out, we're now getting contacted. And so people are starting to reach out to us, like, hey, is it okay if, the Boy Scouts are talking about bringing an inflatable archery range, the Amherst Police Department has talked about bringing out some of their bike control and the squad, life care contacted us, hey, can we bring an ambulance for the kids to climb around it and kind of have stuff to do? Amherst Fire's talking about bringing out a fire truck, so it's just, it's going to be a great family event for kids to keep busy, everybody to get together, see what's available in the summer months. I know a lot of the athletic groups asked, can we bring a laptop so parents can register right there? Metro Parks asked us, because we, we know that the Metro Parks do a lot of different camps and things, so we had said, you know, can you come talk about those camps? They're like, yeah, but we also need lifeguards. Like, can we talk about lifeguards in our lifeguard classes? And so, yeah, bring it on. So it's, it's really kind of coming in together as this really cool community event for people to get together and just kind of get things going for kids in the summer. We're also looking at the Mental Health Addiction Recovery Board, reaching out to Locata, because it's not just about keeping the kids engaged, it's also about keeping them safe. So if they can have tables out there to give information to parents as well, like, I really think it's a way to kind of rally our community around what's going on in the summertime.
So I think it was a fair, I think it was tables, it brochures information, again, making it convenient for parents and everything.
Right.
So I think it's going to be a great event. Think about, you know, the parents who've had it the last two years and now this, just excellent that Sarah, her staff, and student services can respond and do to add this kind of things for parents and the community. It's just, it's just an awesome thing, so I'm hopeful that maybe Sarah and Steve could do a conversation in the next couple of weeks.
We've been talking about that.
So we could really, I want to make sure everyone really knows where, when it's happening, what's happening, and how awesome it would be to show up, so.
And you said that was on the 15th of April?
It's on the 15th.
15th.
It's tax day, so we thought about asking H&R Block to come out, anybody with last-minute filings, but we realized that really kind of isn't the same as what we're going for.
April 15th, which is a Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
5:00 to 7:00 PM, it'll be at Powers.
At Powers.
Powers Elementary School. And it'd kind of be combination, probably inside and probably outside with some of those things, so.
Yep, that's the plan.
Parking, come in for any entrance. And you mentioned some high school students, possibly.
We're, we're hoping to talk to high school students, too, about kind of manning the playground, so kids can plan the playground while parents are doing what the parents need to do, so.
Team act, so thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Great idea. Thank you.
Mr. Engle?
Uh, yes, JVS. Not a whole lot of reporting from the JVS, just it's competition time, there's some concerns about competitions, especially when we have to start traveling. I mean, the in-state ones, we've, you know, almost started those and doing very well at them. Lots of success stories there that you've read about and seen, both in print and on social media. Also, we are hoping that they will continue to move forward with these. As of now, there's been no talk that they won't continue with some of these that are held statewide or nationally from that perspective. It will all depend on how the virus scenario plays out from that perspective. The Board will be having a Board Retreat this Saturday, which they do on an annualized basis. It's a little later this year than usual because the facilitator wasn't available until this Saturday, so that will be happening, which I think will be lots of discussions about the concern that several people have expressed, is there going to be another leviation? If so, when? No decisions have been made on that whatsoever yet, so I'd just like to keep you apprised of that. And for those of you who like to go to events at the JVS, I won't name anyone at this table, okay? But this Saturday night is the Culinary Program Alumni Dinner, the Seven Corps Dinner, okay? That you can buy tickets for. I don't know the price of an individual ticket, I'm sorry, Teresa, I didn't look that up for you. If you want to sponsor a table, it's $2,500, which includes eight seats, so that I can't tell you, but I did look up the digital price.
Ron's doing that.
So that is happening this weekend, and that information is available on the website, okay? And what happens there is you have people who are employed in the culinary world who have graduated from the JVS will be coming back. There'll be chefs from all over the United States that have, and choose sous chefs and chefs and pastry chefs and stuff come and create this to raise money for the program. So that's what it's all about. And this is probably the 50th year or 60th that they've done this, so that's happening this Saturday night as well. Any questions you have for me for the JVS? If not, that would conclude my report.
Thank you. Mr. Sears, the personnel recommendations?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Snyder. Items A speaks to some things I just talked about as part of my report. Same thing for Item B there with the recommendation from Mr. Schwartz. Most of the other items are fairly routine for this time of year, some supplemental contracts there as we prepare and move into the spring sports season. I will say that Item I is some additional tutoring hours beyond the normal school day for some of our staff to provide some additional tutoring for some of our high school students. But for the most part, items in this section, other than the ones that we've already talked about, are fairly self-explanatory, straightforward. At this time, we'd like to recommend approval of Items 12A through 12J.
Move. Second. Discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Yarkabozie?
Aye.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mr. Engle?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Snyder?
Aye. Moving on to educational recommendations, please?
Yes, thank you. Item A, just wanted to highlight there a couple of trips. The second bullet point there, actually, we just found out about this late last week. We had, and I'm not sure of all the details, I know Mr. Tellier would know more about it than what I do, but submitted some type of proposal, and as a result of what was submitted, three of our students and two staff will receive an all-expense-paid trip to New York City. And those details are outlined in the exhibit, but obviously, a tremendous, tremendous effort, you know, by our students and teachers. Mrs. Christinger, I know, was kind of the point person with this, so just a really nice honor for those students. Perhaps we can have some kind of, I thought if you need to have some kind of follow-up or some kind of report back in terms of, you know, what that experience was all about, because that's a special, special trip. The other items here, Item B is an update of our school calendar. This now includes open house, parent-teacher conference dates. One of the things we, we did this year, we actually worked in collaboration, our principals did a nice job of working with PTO presidents. Again, we've got some thoughts and input from them and worked that, their ideas into the calendar as well. So again, that's an updated calendar with not just the dates that were in school, but where we have those parent conference dates and those types of things. And then, some other contracts there for various services. Item F and Item H, those are our program of studies for the junior high and Steel High School. Those are actually on the website. It really is kind of interesting to look at those program of studies to see what opportunities that we make available to our students. As the Board is aware, we've expanded our number of electives over the last several years, so it's kind of neat to go through those, but again, just would like to submit that for your approval. And in general, would like to recommend approval of Items 13A through 13H.
Second. Questions, discussion?
The only, I don't have any questions. The only thought that I have in all of these travel things that we do in the spring is I think that we need to just make a school statement from that perspective, that as long as there's no harm that we can see, and, you know, we need to just work on the footage that we learned from the county, from the state, from all of those people, because I think that there will be some parent concerns about people traveling to New York, or people traveling to Columbus, or people traveling to whatever, when you know, when they hear that, you know, some institutions locally have canceled all travel, what's going to happen, because that's their child? So I do think that we need to publicly make some statements about that when we have all of this travel going on from that perspective. So with the help of... this travel going on from that perspective. So, with the help of Burgess and Burgess and the authorities that as we get that information, I think that we should take the forefront on that and not be the school that hasn't stated about that, that we will cancel if we see a need to do so from that perspective, because it's a state of panic right now. And now with three or four cases being announced in the state of Ohio, it's only going to escalate in Ohio. As long as we were at zero cases, I thought we were pretty good shape. But now it will just run rampant again and, and stuff. So, I think that we just need to make a statement, post that statement and update that periodically.
That's, that's a good idea. And we're, we will, I'm guessing, we will most likely receive daily updates now from the Lorraine County Health Department, because I assume they're going to get daily updates from the folks in Columbus. So...
Yeah, because the governor already issued a statement of urgency for the state of Ohio. So, I'm just saying, it's going to, we need to be on top of it before it gets on top of the school system.
Right.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call please.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mrs. Knight.
Aye. Who wants to business recommendations, please, Mr. Sayers?
Yes, thank you. Three items here. Just wanted to comment on each of these. Item A, this is a, an agreement for help and assistance with mowing and trimming and various landscaping type work throughout the summer months. As you're aware, two years ago, we had a 12-month buildings and grounds employee leave the district. And at that time, we made a decision to, instead of replacing that one position, that perhaps we could get more service to the district by contracting with, you know, with an outside entity, a private group that can help us with mowing and trimming and those kinds of things. We did that last year. Mr. Grimmon went out to bid again this year. And actually, we received five bids. And this was the lowest bid of the five by almost $10,000. So, this is a group from just outside of Wellington. And we've heard good things. And Mr. Grimmon has done some background checking. So, I wanted the board to be aware of, of the rationale for this recommendation. The other item there, B, is a recommendation to purchase four school buses in a cost of just over $77,000. A couple of things I wanted to share here. Originally, we had, our thought was to, in July, purchase either two or three new buses. And of course, that would be in next year, next fiscal year's budget. But as we looked at some things, had some conversations with Ohio Schools Council, we found out that we can actually benefit from this year's pricing through the end of March. Is that correct, Amy? And so, we just thought that at this point in time, it may be, it may be who bus to just move forward that purchase now instead of waiting until July. The other thing is, they've given us two- to three-week delivery. So, all four buses should be here by the time we return from spring break. So, that was a little bit of change in plans. But we thought, as we looked at the timing of it and the availability and costs and those kinds of things, we might as well go ahead and make that decision. Now, again, pending your approval. The other item I wanted to mention too, and I have to commend Chuck Grimmon. He's done a lot of research in working with our transportation folks. This recommendation is for four gasoline buses. Typically, in the past, we have went with diesel. But we've done a lot of research over these last three or four days. And there seems to be a movement towards, going towards gasoline. In fact, Mr. Grimmon had shared with me, he's talked to some folks in different districts and had done some research. I guess several years ago, 80% of the new buses were diesel. I guess now it's about 50/50 in terms of 50% of the new buses that are purchased are diesel now. So, that shift is occurring. And Mr. Grimmon, I just jotted some notes here, because admittedly, he knows a lot more about this than, than I do. But lower maintenance costs, he gave the example, the diesel bus uses 22 quarts of oil. A gas bus, seven quarts. Filters, the cost of filters, much more expensive for diesel than gas. Obviously, fuel is cheaper for gas than it is for diesel. The unit itself, if you remember last year when we purchased the diesel, we were right around 80, I want to say it was $80,500. So, the unit itself is a little bit less expensive. And the other thing that was brought to our attention is with the gas, we receive a five-year drive train warranty, which if we wanted that on a diesel, we would have to pay extra for that. So, with the gas, a five-year drive train warranty is included. So, we had a lot of discussion late last week. And we thought, you know what? Let's, let's, let's go with the gas this time. So, we're kind of moving in that direction. But I wanted you to know, that is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. But when you look at these items, it's, it seems to make sense. And we actually had a gentleman the other day on speakerphone. And he said, what we're seeing in Ohio is whether you have gas or whether you have diesel, it's not the engine. It's the, it's the body of the school bus. That you tend to have an issue with rust in the body of the bus before you have, before the engine goes out. So, that's, you know, that's really the issue, not so much whether it's, you know, gas or diesel. So, again, wanted to share some of the rationale for that change. And then the last item, again, along the transportation line, is this gives Amy and I the authority to develop agreements with other school districts. We're entering into that time of year with spring sports. It's a little bit unique, because a lot of fall sports and winter sports are, occur in the evenings, 6 o'clock, 6:30, 7 o'clock, you know, football, basketball, you know, soccer, volleyball, those types of things, where spring, all the baseball, softball and track typically start at 4:30. So, sometimes districts run into with makeups and different schedules and so forth. So, this gives us, you know, the ability to, in an emergency situation, utilize a Clearview bus, let's say, or a Vermillion bus. And the same thing, if they wanted to use one of our buses, you know, we could work out in an agreement, whether it be during the day or for an after-school event. But this is, this would give Amy and I the authority to, to go ahead and enter into those kinds of agreements. And this is something we try. We partner with school districts and even transporting students, you know, if it makes sense for, for us to transport a student from another district or vice versa, to try to do those things as efficiently as possible. So, again, three items there. Would like to recommend approval of items 14A through 14C.
Second. Take your pick. Any discussion?
I have a question. On, on A, these people will be reporting to Chuck?
Yes.
They do not do the fields, athletic fields?
That's correct.
Everything but?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Hopefully get a better job.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the left. We've had the seatbelt issues for so many times. Are these buses, are these new buses coming with seatbelts?
No.
And I think that's fine, because that would only open up another word, cannon hurdles. I'm glad to hear that that is how that is.
Are we selling some buses?
We have, at this point, if we were to make a decision, I'd say no. I think we're going to keep some buses so we have a bigger pool of spare buses, again, to help with those unexpected, hey, we thought we had four buses going out today, but we've got to make up this baseball game or softball game, so now we need another bus. If I were a guest right now, I think we're going to, I think we're going to maintain our older buses as spares.
On C, Steve, is that, is that something new? Or, I mean, are other districts doing this? Or are we just, and are we just not getting into this? Or just, it's like a new program within the schools?
Yeah, it's not really a new program. It's just a cooperative, just districts working together. You know, we've contacted other districts and said, hey, if we were not into a jam and needed a bus or two in the case of emergency, whether it be during the day or after school, could we do that? And a couple of districts have said, yes, we've got normally, we have two spares available. If something comes up, we'd be happy to work something out. And then the call could also, or come the other way.
How many spares do we have? Will we have?
Uh, we have right now, some, they're, they're cycling through. Some of the spares are being repaired. But once, once these, once these buses are in, we should have a good five spares minimum.
Okay.
Who's next?
Did you have a question?
No.
Oh, I thought maybe you had a follow-up question. But we're just trying to be proactive. And so, if something comes up where we need a bus...
So, if we borrow a bus, is that, are we covered with our insurance? Does it cover it too?
Yeah. And this was actually a recommendation of the insurance and our legal counsel.
So, we assume whatever bus we...
Okay.
And as, as you said with the gases, I, I know some of the trucks that we have run, we are also shifting to gas. EPA here, I think, in a couple of years back, 14, 15, has really str, tightened EPA rule. And they're just not holding on. There's a lot of issues with, with diesels right now with the EPA regulation. So, it's a good move.
Yeah, that's what we had Chuck. And again, yes.
And we have a large tank for gas on the premises already, correct?
Yes.
I was going to say, I thought we did get both, right?
Yeah, we were just very fortunate that Chuck really kind of dug into this. And I didn't realize it was, you know, now 50/50. And it's evidently, the shift is occurring in the EPA was another thing that he had heard. He talked to a mechanic in another district. So, we'll see how it goes. But it seems to be, when you look at the maintenance costs...
Oh, drastically low.
Right.
Compared.
Right.
Hey, roll call please.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Knight.
Aye. Take a motion for adjournment?
I'll take that motion.
She made a motion, right?
Yes.
I was saying...
Okay. Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubozie?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Oh, sorry.
Mrs. Knight.
I...